Sorry, I'll call the meeting to order. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right. Okay, well, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purposes of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is December 8th, 2021. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We're eating out of this vote. Okay. I think we are all on attendance here and we have no substitute professionals. I would also note that this is Mr. Harbison's final meeting as a commissioner. At the end of the proceedings, we're going to lower the lights and bring up the music and we're gonna have a parting, parting speech.
You can have an Irish wake.
We're gonna have an Irish wake, right?
You can help us, Bonnie.
That's right. Okay. I'd like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive section immediately prior to this evening's meeting to discuss one real estate matter. Okay, so before we get into our regular meeting, I'm going to make a statement concerning the 380 402 Hawes Lane project, which we discussed at length at our workshop two nights ago. So at the December 6th, 2021 meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the Board accepted public comment related to the construction of a proposed behavioral health facility at the subject property as presented to the local planning commission on November 16th, 2021. The overwhelming sentiment of the public comment encouraged the Board of Commissioners to consider preserving the property for open space purposes. At the conclusion of the public comment period, the Board agreed to contact the owner of the property in order to request additional time for the township to pursue the availability of grant funds for such purposes. On Tuesday morning, December 7th, Commissioner Lee and I participated in a conference call with the owner and learned that township's request for additional time could not be accommodated for various reasons. The owner was also asked to consider an alternate institutional use and or smaller building as well as the construction of fewer townhomes. These requests were made with the goal of providing a more compatible use for the neighborhood and the preservation of open space. These requests were declined. Our understanding is that the owner will begin the process of applying for construction of a by right institutional use. Following our conversation, the owner was provided a series of questions that were asked at the November 16th Planning Commission meeting, and he agreed to provide answers to those questions after consulting with a behavioral health provider. It is the Board's intention to share the answers with the community upon receipt. So that is my comment, and I will also, at this point, I would like to make a motion. We had a executive meeting just a few minutes ago, and we discussed, you know, sort of a next step, and because we were one of the things that we are pursuing is, 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 is readdressing the idea of acquiring this property as open space, the first thing you, one would want to know is what does it cost? As everybody knows, we are we can't, we are not allowed to pay more if we're going to condemn the land. Let's say we are not allowed to pay more for the land than a fair market value appraisal, third-party fair market value appraisal would, would indicate. And so we took a vote, or I will say, we, we, we took a straw vote, and I would like to now make a motion to hire a third-party appraiser to give us a fair market value for the 380 402 Hawes Lane property. And for the purpose of determining the value of that property.
So moved.
Thank you, and we have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have a four, three. Thank you, four, three. Please record a four, three vote.
And, Mr. President, we accept comment for that vote, or?
Yes, and we can accept. I'm sorry, and I'm sorry about that. We should accept comment on that. So anybody who wants to make a, make a comment or?
I'd like to make a brief comment. I just think that it, regardless of what the appraisal comes in at, whether it's low, high, you know, on the money, I think this leads us down a path. Whether it is the township purchasing this property, condemning the property, leads us down a path that will incur exorbitant cost to the taxpayers, to the community at a time when, you know, I just don't think we've had the debate with whether this is the property that we want to expend this capital on.
Right.
The township has needs. We have needs for playing fields for kids. We have aspirations for a trail system. We have very sensitive properties larger, much larger than this, that have the potential to be coming on the market in the near future, and the thought of beginning a process of expending sizable amount of capital on this property is, I think, dangerous, and I just don't think that we've kind of played everything out. I don't know what the, the end of this appraisal will give us that will lead us in that direction. So that is very much why I'm voting against this.
And I will say, I don't disagree necessarily with your sentiment, but I think that, you know, more information is better than less, and that's why I would vote in favor, at least, you know, coming to some understanding of what it's worth, so.
And I agree with our president. I think that we do need to find out what the land is worth in order that we can make a viable option if we even want to purchase the land. That's, it's not that this is leading us down the road to purchasing, but it's given us a viable option to know what the land is, what the land's fair market value is, so that we can present that to the neighbors to let them know exactly how we're going to proceed, and if this is even a viable option. So I, once again, I think that, as I made on Monday, dealing with hypotheticals just leads to inflammatory rhetoric that we should need to avoid, because this is going to be a project that is really going to dictate how we are going to allow developers in the future. So I think that we should tread carefully on this, and I think it is just common sense, in my, in my opinion, that we got to find out what the land is worth in order to find out if we even want to go down that path. So that's why I am voting in favor of securing a fair market value of what the land is worth. Thank you, Mr. President.
May I make one comment here? I agree with that. I think it's good to know what to do, as, you know, I don't have a vote after tonight anyway, so it doesn't matter what I think, but it's, I think it's good to have knowledge, and I have also encouraged the Board to ask the solicitor to do a little research on the proximity of behavioral health to schools. You know, if there is, it was brought up, I have a sense, none of us know what we're talking about, I can certainly say that, but it would be useful for us to know that, you know, and it could be game-changing, or it'd be, if it's not the way we want it to be, be useful to know that. So I encourage that. We don't need to vote on that, but I would encourage that we devote some resources to that.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Lee, you want to make some comments?
I may want to make comments. I'm curious if people in the audience are here to speak about it.
Okay.
We'll have a public.
We will have a public comment period in about two minutes, okay? So let me just say that.
I'll hold off on my.
Okay, then later this evening, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a budget hearing on the 2022 budget. The Board will also conduct a special meeting to close out the business of 2021 and adopt the 2022 budget. Any questions or comments related to the 2022 budget should be held until the public hearings are conducted. So what we'll do is close this meeting, open the budget hearing, close that meeting, open yet another budget adoption proceeding, close that, and then come back to this. So a little complicated, but that's what we'll do. And then, there you go. So and our next, our next resolution, this is the biggie, I would like to invite Bonnie Davis.
Are we gonna do the first public comment after that or before that?
Yeah, well, this is the way it's written, so yes, right, yes. Yeah, so I'd like to invite Bonnie Davis, tax collector, to the front of the room to be joined by Commissioner Harbison. And I'd like to ask Mr. Commissioner Harbison to read into the record the Resolution Number 1556, a resolution honoring Bonnie S. Davis for 13 years of service as a Springfield Township tax collector and treasurer.
And because nothing is simple, the way this works is I will read this lovely thing, and we'll enjoy it, and then we'll stop, and we have to vote on it. And then, oh, it doesn't say, you know, and listen there. I know it doesn't, so I guess I don't have to fake that one. So anyway, but that's why it's a little stilted, but we do want it to be proper. Resolution Number 1556, a resolution honoring and thanking Bonnie S. Davis for her service to Springfield Township Montgomery County. Whereas Bonnie S. Davis is a lifelong resident of Springfield Township Montgomery County, having graduated from Springfield Township High School in, and whereas in January 2009, Bonnie was appointed by the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners to fill a vacancy in the position of Township Treasurer/Tax Collector. And whereas in November 2009, Springfield Township voters elected Bonnie to the position of Township Treasurer/Tax Collector, a position to which she was reelected in 2013 and 2017. And whereas Bonnie was asked to and did humbly serve on various professional commissions and associations for the purpose of disseminating information and educating individuals on assessment and tax collection practices. And whereas Bonnie tirelessly volunteered her time and services to numerous township, school district, and civic committees, including school PTAs, Girl Scout leader, club Cub Scout den mother, football team parents association, and the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And whereas Bonnie served as president of the Montgomery County Tax Collectors Association from February 2012 to February 2019. And whereas in April 2018, the Democratic Committee of District 154, Area 9 honored Bonnie with the Democrat of the Year Award. And whereas Bonnie achieved her goals of educating the Springfield Township taxpayers and modernizing the process of paying property taxes in Springfield Township. And whereas under date of May 28th, 2021, Bonnie S. Davis informed the Board of Commissioners that she would not be seeking reelection at the end of her current term. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township does hereby recognize, commend, and thank Bonnie S. Davis for her many years of service to the Springfield Township community, and also extends best wishes for a healthy and happy retirement. That is my motion, Mr. President.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, that one, yeah, right, okay. Okay, and we, question the comments, I'll just go and say, Bonnie, thank you for all the work you've done, and, you know, you know, don't, don't be a stranger and all that sort of thing, right? Okay, okay, do I, okay, we have a second. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record your names, but, okay.
All right, thank you, Bonnie.
Didn't have my water.
Okay, the Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. So Richard.
I just wanted to make a extremely brief remarks about the Hawes Lane property. This is about more than Hawes Lane woods. Times have changed, people are more aware. This is about a loss in our community. It's about the anger and the feelings of powerlessness that one more wood is going to be cut down. We've had so many cut down. One more piece of beautiful Springfield is lost to some developers' pockets. Many people are just sick and tired of this happening, and they're now saying, no. We can preserve Harston Woods. We can make it much better. We can make it a beautiful wooded preserve. We need to, and yes, it's going to be exhausting, and there's going to be more struggles ahead. I'm completely aware that there are more properties that are huge, but this is an important sort of stand that we're making. If you love nature, if you love our community, what else can you do but fight for it? Thank you. Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind stating your name and where you live, that would be, that would be great.
My name is Jeanne Williams, and I live on Norfolk Road in the Wedgewood section. And I just thought I'd thank the commissioners for possibly taking a little more time to decide on the Hawes Lane parcel of land. Thank you for considering other possibilities, including eminent domain, irregardless of how long it may take. It could help keep this little section of land as it is at this time. This will give all a chance to research other outcomes for this tract, also to look into and possibly start a fun drive to contribute to the purchase of this property. I am sure there are more residents that would prefer a park or open land than there have, than that have come here and voiced their opinions. Look, if you will, what two men, Ed Otwell and Jim Cisco, did with their dreams for children of Springfield. With hard work, they changed the environmental damaging waste runoff in a branch of the Wissahicken, created a beautiful park in Erdenheim. With determination and hard work, residents could create a lovely, environmentally friendly park right here next to our schools on Hawes Lane. A park that could be used for ecological studies, for school projects, or a quiet peaceful place to walk, and children to play and enjoy for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have any email? Oh, who? Okay, oh, okay.
This is Samantha Kuhn in Lily.
Right.
And do you mind if I take this first? Um, I'm a lifetime Girl Scout, as well as my daughter, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to read from the Girl Scout law. Okay? You want to help me? Okay, try it.
I will do my best to be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, considerate and caring, courageous and strong and responsible for what I say and do.
And to respect myself and others, respect authority, use resources wisely, make the world a better place, and be a sister to every Girl Scout.
Well, well said.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, or? Do we have any email comments, Brandon? Okay, all right.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a few remarks.
Yep, go ahead.
First, I just want to acknowledge Commissioner Cobb, you made good points about the financial ramifications of something like this, and I don't disagree. That's something that we really have to take into account. I've been one of the more outspoken commissioners in opposition to the presented townhome plans, and without my voice, I suspect perhaps those plans would have gone through. Therefore, I feel I owe the public an explanation. I know people are fearful about this process, debate over Hawes Lane ending up with an institutional product, project that nobody seems to want. The vast majority of the public do not seem to want it, or the Commissioners as a whole does not seem to want it, and MEH has stated that they do not want it. But here we are informed that a conditional sales agreement with Behavioral Health Company is in place. I don't know what the terms of the agreement are, nor is it my business to know. However, I am sure that agreement is contingent upon the buyer receiving full approval on a formally submitted plan that goes through the land development process. Some of the discussion going forward may be less relevant based on how truly Haven is committed to the site and how committed MEH is to Haven buying the parcel, but I feel it's important to state where I stand based on where it is now, being one of just seven commissioners with a say. I will support a zoning change or amendment for 16 townhomes, which is the reasonable, reasonable density of townhomes for this parcel. I will support an effort that the township helped the developer make that density work, perhaps by a subdivision that preserves a large portion of the green space and makes 16 units more feasible for profitability. There's this type of creative proposal that I wished was on the table, rather than the tweaking of one singular option, which has been as much dense housing as possible. It is notable that I've been told by many people that we're lucky to be dealing with a Springfield resident who cares what the community wants in the, with this parcel and has a history of popular local projects. And then an outside investor could come in with a buy-right plan for an institutional user that the neighbors would not want. I don't dispute that idea, and I'm thankful to be dealing with someone that is an asset to our community, is approachable, and is someone with deep roots and friendships in Springfield. I do get that. In this discussion, though, it is important that the public knows that an impetus for closing on the purchase in early 2020 was not solely based on providing a residential alternative. There was a proposal for an assisted living facility forthcoming. However, I understand that proposal fell through once COVID stopped many projects like it in their tracks in March of 2020. It was after that point that the idea of townhomes came about. I will also support a fully fleshed-out effort to see the public, see if the public in township can find a way to preserve or otherwise acquire the property for the public good, notwithstanding those challenges that have been mentioned. If we do see a formal application for an institutional plan, I will support the effort to ensure that plan is compliant with our zoning standards, including careful consideration of any variances or waivers for aspects such as dimensional requirements, parking, stormwater management, and tree removal and replacement. I will not support a vote to change zoning standards to accommodate an egregious overdevelopment based on fear of what might be worse. If we were to vote to approve that level of density of six and a half homes per acre, then that is the final outcome. It has been discussed that one of the perks of that decision would have, would be having more say over the particulars of the design as a condition of the approval. But in the end, it is still 30 homes on that small site, no matter how you tinker around with the layout. That density is almost double what the reasonable, what should be reasonable there. I get that an institutional use in some ways can be considered just as dense of a use. In fact, the impervious coverage allowance is higher than it would be with townhomes. But the site plan would be more centralized, like you see next door in Harston Hall. But if we are actively allowing a change in zoning by our votes, the bar of benefit to the public to accommodate a commercial buyer should be extremely high. And I feel we are not near that standard with that, with this density. The public, and with the finality of this density, should not be the insurance policy to make a speculative purchase work. We don't share the profits when they work, and we shouldn't subsidize the risk when they don't. Both projects will impact traffic in some way, guaranteed. It's already a major problem on this road. It is not a certainty to say 30 homes will be less impactful in terms of traffic, air and water quality, aesthetics, impact on tax revenue, impact on demand of township services, and overall effect on quality of life for our neighbors. Would we trade Harston Halls that sits right now for another 30 to 40 townhomes and think that the traffic would improve? I'm not saying that another institutional building, brand new, would be as quiet as Harston, but it is not a universal truth that anyone can claim that it would be on the other extreme end of that spectrum. And I think most important, understand that the choice is not a simple matter of immediate overdevelopment, of which immediate overdevelopment you want. We know most residents would choose any number of townhomes over this specific institution. We know that. But the outcome of having either is not equal. If we voted for dense housing now, it is a done deal and permanent. Haven is not a done deal. We haven't seen a plan, only a generic concept. We haven't heard from them. We don't know the particulars of their sale contingencies. We haven't even heard the answers that the planning commission and neighbors asked about at their November 16th meeting that the developer committed to having answered. That was over three weeks ago. I know this use is a possibility. It is a risk. If one day this facility is built, I am sure there will be all sorts of blame going around, and a ton of it will be directed squarely at me for opposing a safer play in retrospect. I am prepared to accept that based on doing what I believe is the right thing right now in the best interest of Springfield Township. Some of my colleagues see the calculus a little differently here, think 30 homes is better than the unknown, than that unknown, but they also felt the same way about 41 homes and maybe even 100 apartment units before that. That is a valid view, and I respect that opinion. That is a valid view. I just feel we are running out of shots to do the right thing for the long term when it comes to overdevelopment in an already overburdened neighborhood, and having those open spaces vanish with each passing day. And it should not always come down to a simple choice between very bad and just plain bad. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yep.
Katie Cudders, 1203 Green Hill Road. I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Lee said about the blame. And just make something clear. It was, an email was sent from my commissioner to a neighbor of ours, and I quote, he said, in, in regard to Haven being signed, he said, "I'm sure you know the speakers from last night. You can thank them for this." And I just want to say that placing blame on anybody that came to a township meeting to express their concerns is not to blame. There's nobody to blame. The, the choice was ultimately MEH's choice. That's the only person at the end of the day that had the power to choose what goes, or to, to make a to what am I, the word I'm looking for, to make a sale or an agreement with Haven. Nobody, nobody but the landowner. And so the onus is on the landowner, and for our public figure to state to the neighbors, now, and I called him and I said, "I can't believe you just said that we were to blame." And he said, "Oh, not you. I'll, I'll name the other people that are to blame." No, no, we're not going to name anybody that's to blame. We came here because we felt that we could do better for our neighborhood, that we wanted the best for our kids, for the that we wanted the best for our kids, for the kids that walk past there, for the streets, for the land, for everything that everybody's mentioned over the last two years. We did not make the choice of Haven coming to Haws Lane. The owner did. Please do not blame anybody else. Thank you.
Hey, can I say something? Okay, so I'll be brief. I have no prepared statements. I just want to make this observation. And I want to, I want, I want the community to know, I don't want the community to lose hope, I guess is my point. This is a long process that we have to go through. There are a lot of hoops to have to be jump through. There are a lot of approvals that would have to be sought from both state and, and local authorities in the licensing of a facility like this. And I, I think that we have to continue to press for the right thing, and in my opinion, and I think a lot of your opinions, the right thing is just to leave this piece of ground alone. You know, we, we, it's much too, too critical. It's, it's much too important. It's much too environmentally sensitive. We just have to leave this property alone and commit it to the, for additional open space in the township going forward for years and years. And, and, and I also think that when we started this process, we, we thought we had a fairly cooperative developer at the end, and the, and the final analysis, it turns out we didn't. So that's why we're here today, and that's why we're basically having this thing crammed down our throats. But I will, I will continue to, as Commissioner Lee certainly will, and others on the board, push for the, the open space plan here and, and not the, you know, highly exploitive institutional development on this piece of ground. So that's, that's my, my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
As the township solicitor, I just wanted to clear that notwithstanding anything that's been said tonight by any of the commissioners, the township will evaluate any application in accordance with the laws of Springfield Township and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and evaluate them fairly and fully and carefully and not with any prejudice whatsoever. And I just want that on the record.
And, Mr. President, I was going to be, yeah, brief unprepared statement as well, and one, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Lee for his comments. While I disagree with some of the things you said, I also agree with a large amount of what you said. And I think at the end of the day, one of the more frustrating things about this, this multi-year odyssey of debate that we've had, it's an important debate. But it's that I think that literally everyone involved probably had the same goals and had the same desire of outcome. Came at it from different places, and I think our sense of what was possible, what was real was, was very different. But at the end of the day, everybody involved wanted what was best for our township, was best for our community. And I hope that we can find a way to have these debates that incite tremendous passion because of the tremendous impact and, and the, and the change that, that is involved in these decisions. But I hope that we can find a way to have these debates and not have them become personal attacks, not have them be filled with I mean, conspiracy nuances and, and, and really the, the parts of this debate that have come down hard on certain members of the community. I can be an easy target. The developer can be an easy target, but at the end of the day, you know, I do believe, I, I know for myself that I, I do want what's best for the community. I happen to believe that, you know, the other approach in working with the developer and finding a compromise to do a residential project that would enable us to preserve the existing trees on the property, to be able to put a pedestrian path there, to be able to have a substantially larger water retention basin on that property, which would have actually benefited water runoff coming off of that property. That, my belief was that would have been the better option for the community. But I don't, certainly don't, I would never attack anybody else for having their beliefs, and I greatly appreciate the advocacy on the, on the part of the, the neighbors. The piece that I really have been dismayed about, though, have been the personal attacks, particularly on the developers as well. Because at the end of the day, you know, they, they do live in the community and it is business. And, you know, one of the unfortunate things is, is that we are a relatively small township, under seven square miles, under twenty thousand residents. We don't have a very large commercial base. We have very limited financial resources without increasing taxes exorbitantly. And so my eye and, and all of our eyes, and I think all the residents' eyes are always on, you know, how best to utilize the limited resources that we have. And as hard as it is to give up this plot of land to development, you know, we do have to keep an eye on the fact that we've got other properties around the township, we have other desires, other, other needs. We have previous properties that we've explored, purchasing like tank car that still are not resolved and still have huge price tags out on them. And so, you know, those are the concerns that I have consistently weighed as we've explored all these other options. But I do think at the end of the day, one of the, one of the tougher things is that, you know, one of the tenants of our society is private property and what someone who owns private property can do with that property by right. And, you know, we have been given an opportunity to debate a lot of this. And that has afforded us, you know, a lot of opportunity to explore options, but I just, I, I guess going back to my desire, my hope is that we can find a way to have these debates that don't involve the personal tax or the suggestions that any, anyone involved doesn't really want what's best for the community or have the, the community's best interest in, in life. Because I think at the end of the day, we all do. I think we're just trying, we're all kind of grappling with the same calculus. So. But I, so, but so, going back to what you said, Commissioner Lee, I do appreciate your comments, and I appreciate everyone's comments on this. So, you know, we'll go from there.
Yeah, and I, let me, me also make one more thing, just, just, just some insight, because I was at another planning commission last night, and we had this was sort of round two, because we had Mr. Overcash presenting his plan for Windmore, and it was yet another two hour sort of wrangle. And somebody got up and said, you know, what is, what is the township planned for Windmore? You know, what? And I thought about that, and, you know, the thing is, we're not, we're not like Philadelphia County or not Pennsylvania or a, a large city or the federal government. We don't plan airports and highways and all that sort of thing, you know, that's not our job. What we do is try to, you know, revise and fine tune our ordinances so that they work for our public and, and, you know, work for the kind of housing that people want to sell and, you know, I will say that, you know, I've been doing planning stuff now for a long time, and, you know, we, I think in our township, we have something like twenty-six or twenty-seven different zoning districts, which is for a small township is pretty, you know, pretty out of scale. And some of the ordinances that we have, including this one, is probably, you know, have been around for fifty years or more. And we need to revise these. We're in fact, the planning commission is now going through the whole process of revising our saldo, redefining what the terminology is. Mr. Holly of, of our county commissioner, county planning commission took us through two nights of, of exemplary zoning districts around us in Shelton Ham and Abington and, and actually Windmore too. And, but, but this is what we do. We, we try to revise our zoning ordinances, and we, we tweak them as we, as we see fit. But then, but then we're referees, you know, we don't, we don't own the property, you know, and once the zoning ordinances are established, that's the law, and, you know, the zoning hearing board are the people that interpret that for us. And for the most part, we, 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 we want them to do a good job. But it's very difficult. It's very difficult. It's, it's, it's really a struggle, you know. And we just, you know, with, as Commissioner Cobb was saying, you know, the property rights, you know, you know, we, you just can't tell people you can't do things, you know, you can do this in Europe. You can just red line areas and say, "Sorry, can't do this anymore. And by the way, you're, the value of your property is zilch," you know, but that doesn't happen in, in America. So, so all I can say is, I am, I've been doing planning for a long time, and I love it, and it's a very arcane thing, but I'm dedicated to really trying to improve our zoning in this township. And, and, you know, bringing us up into the twenty-first century, you know, and I, and as is our planning commission and our zoning officer, and we have a new historic commission. You know, I think we can, you know, start a new open space committee, and, and I think, you know, the, it's, you know, the world is our oyster going forward, you know, we just have to do a great job and, and pay attention. So that's all I can say. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Beth McMarra, twelve eleven Green Hill Road. Thank you once again for taking time to make space for this on the agenda. I just had a question for Commissioner Cobb about your comment regarding what I, when I heard you describe what could be a proposal, right, with some of the things you mentioned, a walking path and preserve trees and a significant piece of the land preserved and townhomes. It, I heard that is something that, like, were you insinuating that that's already been proposed? Or is that something that you are saying you, that's something you could get behind, had it ever been proposed?
I thought that the proposal that we had initially looked at, even with the large number of homes initially that was provided.
With forty-two townhomes on it?
Showed.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Thank you.
Showed most of the trees in the back of the property preserved. I don't know if any of them were, were eliminated, because that was a strong stipulation that we initially made. And everything else was aspirational. So as part of the debate, I think we've talked about by making a zoning change, using whatever mechanism we might use, we're going to have the most leverage as a township to say, "You have to put this trail in," or "You have to have a water retention basin that's going to be X amount size." So we, you know, could put in all, we, we could certainly put in a lot more of those wish lists, wish lists in that scenario.
Okay, thank, I appreciate the clarification, and I bring that up just because I want the narrative to be consistent, and I think part of the narrative in this two-plus-year dialogue has been that some of these things have been proposed, and the neighbors shot them down, and that is emphatically incorrect and inaccurate. And a plan that was truly one of compromise that really incorporated the things that the neighbors did bring to those meetings and that the neighbors asked for with consistency around lower density, tree coverage in the front, and some of the other wishlist items, as I hear you say, were not included in any of the plans that were shown. And so the narrative that has been kind of throughout this process is that, well, everything that's been brought up, the neighbors have shot down, which is not true, right? There hasn't been creativity and collaboration and real inclusion of what the neighbors have consistently asked for in any of the plans that have ever come in front of my eyes. So I was just curious, and I appreciate your clarification about it. I wanted to make sure I hadn't missed a plan. Secondly, to your point around remarks and like denigration of MEH and/or Mr. Halligan throughout this process, I think that there can be an and in that statement, right? As you are well aware, as are some of the other commissioners, I have a thirty-five-year relationship with Brian Halligan. So, which creates a little conflict of interest, but here I am. And I think that there can be an and. We can remain professional. We can remain polite and respectful, not calling people out for personality pieces or in a disrespectful way on social media, which I can speak for my neighborhood in saying, we have not taken part in not even a single percent of that disgraceful behavior on social media. But what I can say is that we have consistently, whether Brian's sat right here in my living room on the phone or wherever I've been, we can call each other out on bad behavior when we have not done, like, when we haven't acted from the best part of ourselves. So I think there is a difference between name-calling and bad-mouthing and trying to, you know, crap on someone's reputation and also saying, "We hold each other accountable for good behavior and ethical decision-making and actually being a good neighbor." And those are two different things. So, thank you.
All right. Onto the fun stuff. All right, let's see here. I'll kick it off. This is the report of the Community Development Committee. That would be me. Number one, this is concerning the Flower Town Shopping Center. I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated November fourth, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one from Craig R. Lewis Council for Federal Realty Investment Trust, extending the ninety-day subdivision land development plan review period up to and including February ninth, twenty-twenty-two. The extension of time will provide Federal Realty the opportunity to revise their land development plans to be in compliance with the Springfield Township Code. So that is my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, next is Concerns Resolution Number One five 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 and Building Fee Schedules. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number One five five five, a resolution updating the fee scheduled for building plumbing, mechanical, fire protection, and electrical permits. The fee schedule has been adjusted in order to ensure and the recovery of costs incurred by the Township for the review and inspection of construction activities as required by the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code. So that is my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Aye, there we go. Okay, all right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and nay, anybody, any opposed, say nay. You have a nay, you have a nay card? Oh, he has a nay card. Don't show it, okay. All right.
This is a relic of our Zoom meetings.
Help.
I couldn't.
Please record a unanimous vote. All right. Okay, next, I'm, this is going to turn to the historical commission. Next, I move the Board of Commissioners reappoint David Sands and Joseph Devine to new three-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Historical Commission. The new terms of service shall expire on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. That is my motion. Do I have a second? Thank you. And my, my only comment is, I was in the meeting last night, and I looked at both the gentlemen, and I said, "And you guys do want to do this, right?" And one of them looked at me and said, "Okay," you know, so they're on board, you know.
What's the salary for that position?
This, this is for, for.
Normal salary.
Normal salary.
Yeah.
But given that they're both on the Planning Commission, the Historical Commission's the easy lifting.
Yeah, they got to slink past the, you know, the caucus room.
They pay taxes on that.
Yes. All right, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay. Okay, and next we will hear from our Chairman of Community, that's me, Chairman of the Internal Affairs and Library Committee, Commissioner Harbison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got items five through nine on the agenda. Item five is the December bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the November check reconciliation in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents. In the December bill listing, the amount of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, the business tax. Thank you. Moving on to item six, the Business Tax Auditor. McCarthy and Company, PC of Lafayette Hill, Pennsylvania, is the Township's business tax auditing firm. In the letter dated October 2021, McCarthy has requested an increase in their hourly rate from $90 per hour to $115 per hour. A survey was subsequently conducted to determine the rates paid by other municipalities for similar work. And it was determined that the increase is appropriate. In fact, it was also determined that if the newer rate were still being charged less than any of their other clients, which is nice. Notwithstanding, therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve an increase in the rate charged by McCarthy and Company, PC, to $115 per hour to perform business tax auditing services on behalf of Springfield Township. The increase shall be effective January 1, 2022. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion?
You should note that even with the increase, we're still below some of the comparable rates that we saw.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Number seven is an announcement about the 2022 agency meeting schedule. That's all of our sub-boards. The 2022 agency meeting schedule will remain substantially the same as the 2021 meeting schedule of the Board of Commissioners and Township Agencies, with the exception of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will begin their meetings at 6:30 PM instead of 7 o'clock PM. The Board of Commissioners will continue to meet each month on the second Wednesday at 7:30 PM and on the Monday preceding the second Wednesday at 7 o'clock PM. Both meetings will take place at the Springfield Township Administration Building. The complete list of the meeting schedule is available upon request. The meeting schedule will also be posted and advertised in the Ambler Gazette. The next item is the 2022 Organization Meeting. Section 701 of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code requires the Board of Commissioners to organize through the election of officers and the designation of the financial institution of the township on the first Monday of January in each even-numbered year. In 2022, the first Monday in January is January 3rd. On that date, the Board of Commissioners will meet for the purpose of organizing at 7 o'clock PM. Prior to the new business of the Board, all newly, newly or re-elected officials will be administered the oath of office by District Justice Kate McGill at approximately 6:45 PM. Finally, item nine, the Library Advisory Committee. I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township reappoint Arthur Walters and Marian Sunderland to new three-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Library Advisory Committee. The new three-year terms of service shall expire on December 31, 2024. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harbison. So next we will hear from the Chairman of our Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First order is the recycling report. And then I'm pleased to announce that during the months of November 2021, Springfield Township residents recycled 159.36 tons of materials with a householder participation rate of 60.6%. The net cost for the month was $17,584.82. My next report is on the Environmental Advisory Commission. But before I do that, I do want to take a point of personal privilege and inform the Board regrettably that the President of our Environmental Advisory Commission, Aaron Stempowitz, lost his wife at the end of last, last month to, to cancer. By all reports, she was a, just a beautiful, charming person. And we want to extend our condolences to him and his family. And there is, there is or will be soon posted on the EAC's page a spot where if, if you're so inclined, contributions can be made in her name to the, to the Cancer Society. So on to my environmental report. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Patrick Hines of Windmore to fill an unexpired term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. Mr. Hines' term of service shall expire on June the 14th, 2022. That is my motion.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My second item is I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Richard Metz of Erdenheim as an Associate Member of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. Associate Members do not have voting privileges, but are encouraged to attend and participate in all meetings of the Commission. Associate Members also assist with educational programs, research, and special assignments. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record, nay. Okay, please record a six-to-one vote.
And that concludes my reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay. Next we will move to our Chairman of Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion this evening concerning the park naming policy of the Parks and Recs Department. At the December the first, 2021, meeting of the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the committee recommended the, the adaptation of an updated policy regarding the naming and renaming of parks and other recreational facilities. The new policy outlines a systematic and consistent procedure for processing requests to name and rename parks, open space, trails, and other facilities, and establish certain criteria and exclusions when considering such a request. The policy also includes a waiting period to accept and consider public comment prior to naming or renaming any facilities. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the Springfield Township Parks, Open Space, Trails, and Facilities naming and renaming policy dated December the first, 2021. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that?
I just have a comment, Mr. President. Where would the public find these, the new policy?
That would be on the website once this is approved.
We could put it there. We generally haven't put it, put it up there in the past, but we can do so. There's nothing wrong with it.
Yeah, I would suggest we do, just so we have a, so the public has an idea what the criteria, criteria is.
And to that end.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cobb. It was included in your agenda package.
Oh, I know. We had it, yes.
Well, no, but posted on, online, as Jonathan had requested, we would start posting the agenda and the materials. And then things up there as part of the.
So it would be in there. It would be in that package.
But then that packet would come offline, you know, once you get to your next meeting. So if your suggestion is to put it on the Parks and Rec, we can certainly do that.
I would make the suggestion.
And I was just going to say, to that end, it takes our existing policy and procedures, which is sort of a shorter abbreviated two pages, and just expands it probably much more depth. But there's nothing really materially different. Is that correct? It just sort of expands and sort of defines waiting periods and kind of how the names are brought up and debated and things like that.
Correct.
Okay. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Graham. And next we will hear from the Chairman of our Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item this evening, Resolution Number 1557, Police Towing Fees. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the Resolution Number 1557, a resolution adopting an updated fee schedule for towing services pursuant to Section 7-39T of the Code of the Township Springfield. The fee schedule was last updated in 2014 and includes modest increases to towing, storage, and road service fees charged by the Township's authorized towing providers. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. Okay, next we will move to our Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
All right, thank you, President. Christmas comes early to the zoning hearing board with a robust agenda for the meeting to be held on Monday, December 20th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in this Springfield Township building, where they will hear four applications. Starting with the application of Jose Antonio Luna Cortez, owner of the property located at 1508 Mermaid Lane in Windmore. Mr. Cortez has requested a use variance, seeking approval to maintain single-family dwelling use on the property and also conduct firewood splitting and a firewood sales operation. The zoning ordinance prohibits multiple uses on the property and the use that may be deemed offensive by reason of odor, dust, fumes, smoke, noise, or vibration in the property zone within the limited industrial district of Ward Number Five. The second application is from Joan and Anne Marie Ford, owners of the property located at 831 Bethlehem Pike in Erdenheim. The applicants have requested a dimensional variance, seeking approval to construct a carport to the side of the existing building that will reduce the side yard setback to six inches. The property is split-zone within both the B1 Business District to the front of the site and the AA Residential District to the rear. That property is located within Ward Number One of Springfield. The third application is from LaSalle College High School, owners of the property located at 8605 Cheltenham Avenue in Windmore. The applicant has requested a dimensional variance, seeking approval to construct a 7,000-square-foot addition to the campus without installing the required onsite parking for the proposed addition. The proposed addition would require an additional 35 onsite parking stalls to be added. That property is zoned within the institutional district of Ward Number Seven of Springfield Township. And finally, we will hear the application of Roger C. Magger, owner of the property located at 603 Burton Road in Orland. And the applicant, the applicant is requesting a dimensional variance, seeking approval to install a 200-square-foot accessory building within the side yard that is proposed to be five feet from the side property line and in line with the front facade of the existing single-family dwelling. The property is owned within the B Residential District of Ward Number Six of Springfield Township. Copies of the application packets are available for review in the Community Development Office during normal business hours here at the Township Building or on our website. Any questions you have can be addressed by contacting Mr. Pennecow at 2158367600. And again, that will be heard on Monday, December 20th, at 7:00 PM in this room. And then finally, Mr. President, I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township reappoint Jennifer Guckin and James Brown to new three-year terms of service as a member and alternate member respectfully of the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board. The new three-year term of service for both individuals shall expire on December 31st, 2024. That's my motion.
Thank you. And do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's my.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Okay, and then finally, we will go to the Chairman of our Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of bids for the Bridge Street Guide Rail Replacement Project. Project includes the insulation of approximately 125 linear feet galvanized metal guide rail along both sides of Bridge Street between Bruce Road and the bridge spanning the Septa Railroad Line. The new guide rail will replace an existing cable guide rail system that no longer complies with ten-dot requirements. Bid documents and forms for submitting a proposal can be found in the PennBid online bid service, will be accepted through January 5th, 2022. That is my motion.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, well, that, that covers our committee report. And we are now going to go into our budget hearing, and I am going to turn the proceedings over to.
You want me to read that part? To close this meeting and convene the public hearing.
Okay. And this actually doesn't say to close.
But you're going to need to close.
Do you have to ask for more?
So I'll, let me, so I will.
Yes.
Let me ask for a motion to, to close this meeting, okay?
Oh.
And then convene a public hearing on the 202 budget. And that is my motion. Any second?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, so now we are into the.
Mr. President, do we do public comment now or then at the end of the budget?
In the middle of, the middle of it, yeah.
Okay.
Right. It's, it's right. After we, we have the purpose of the hearing, the legal requirement, budget statistics, and then we have testimony. So, but I'm going to pass this off to Jeff, so.
Okay, there we go. So let me just give you the roadmap. This is a budget hearing. It should probably only take a minute and a half, two minutes, plus whatever we hear from you. Then we will close the budget hearing and then we'll go back into a regular meeting and would then vote on the budget. It's just sort of jumping through. And there will be public comment in this little thing on the budget, and then we would have final public comments. And I have a statement that I'm reading for my last meeting. Now it'll all be in the, at the end there. So this is just our little budget presentation. We presented it. I read that long statement. And fortunately, I'm not, I don't have to read that again. So this hearing is being held in compliance with Section 1701 of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code as last amended. The sole purpose of the budget hearing is for the Board of Commissioners to receive public comment on the 2022 preliminary budget. Legal requirements, the legal requirements associated with the budget hearing have been met by publishing a budget notice in the Ambler Gazette issues of November 14 and 21, 2021, and making the budget available for public review in the Township Building and Library Building. Budget statistics, the 2022 preliminary budget of Springfield Township is $18,315,318. Proposed real estate rate is 4.516 mils, an earned income tax rate of 1.0% with an annual refuse service fee of $230.15. At this point, do we have any testimony from the public? There being none, all testimony taken at this budget hearing will be considered by the Board of Commissioners, albeit briefly. A special meeting is scheduled to, to close the business of 2021 and adopt the 2022 budget of Springfield Township later this evening. At that point, I would accept motion to close this budget hearing, so we could have that meeting. Somebody make a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, Mr. President, it's back to you.
Okay, great. Now I will accept the motion to convene the 2022 budget adoption meeting to close the business affairs of the Township for 2021 and to adopt the 2022 budget. Okay, and I will first say that the 2022 budget is $18,315,318 with a real estate tax rate of 4.516 mils and an earned income tax rate of 1%. The average household with a real estate tax assessment of $175,400 will realize no change in their 2022 real estate tax. The refuse service fee will decrease by $6.44 for the annual fee set at $230.15. So I would now first. So I will now first accept any public comment. What comment? Yep.
Why is the the sewer?
It's your refuse fee. The recycling costs have come down significantly since the prior year.
Yeah, so the Chinese are now buying plastic again. Good for them.
Thank you.
Okay, so next I'm gonna ask Mister Commissioner Lee to make a motion on resolution number.
Wait, do we have to vote on the budget? You just read it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right?
The budget adoption would be the ordinance nine seventy-one.
Okay, that's number four. Okay, we have four resolutions here.
He just summarized.
Okay, okay, great. All right, so now I'd like to invite Commissioner Lee to comment and make a motion, resolution number one five five eight, the Flower Town Country Club lease.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution number one five five eight, a resolution setting forth the reconciliation in twenty twenty-one rental income expenses of the Flower Town Country Club, and authorizing the transfer of net receipts of eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars from the Township General Fund to the Township Capital Reserve Fund. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote. Okay, next I would like to invite Commissioner Maxwell comment and make a motion on resolution number one five five nine, which is the amendment for the twenty twenty-one budget appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number one five five nine, a resolution reconciling two thousand twenty-one expenditures that may be over expended with unencumbered balances of certain expenditure items. Revenues received in excess of budgetary projections. General fund actual expenses of fifteen million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and thirteen cents were reconciled within the unencumbered balance of expenditures of eleven thousand, two hundred and three dollars and eighty-seven cents. The budgeted expenses for two thousand twenty-one were fifteen million, nine hundred and seven, or fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars.
Fifteen.
Fifteen million. There's a decimal point there, not a comma, sorry. Fifteen million, nine hundred and seven dollars, three hundred and nineteen.
You said I was rusty.
Sorry. Yeah, fifteen million, nine hundred and seven dollars, nine hundred and seven, whatever. Fifteen million, nine hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Perfect. That is my motion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote. Okay, next I'd like to invite Commissioner Cobb to make comment and make a motion on ordinance number nine seventy-one, the adoption of the two oh twenty-two tax levy and budget appropriations.
All right, Mr. President, I move that the Board of Commissioners enact ordinance number nine seven one, setting the two thousand and twenty-two real estate tax rate of four point five one six mils, and that expenses of the township for the twenty twenty-two are appropriated from revenues as set forth in a table attached to and made part of ordinance number nine seven one. That's my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record unanimous vote. And then finally, I'd like to invite Commissioner Wilson to make comment and motion on resolution number fifteen sixty, setting the refuse service fee for twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number one five six zero, a resolution setting the twenty twenty-two refuge service fee of two hundred and thirty dollars to fifteen cents for each residential dwelling unit. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on, let me see. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote. Okay, well, that that closes our budget adoption. Do I have to make a motion? Okay, so I would like to, I'd ask for a motion to, or I'll make a motion to close our twenty twenty-two budget adoption meeting, and and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Are we going back into the meeting for the?
We're gonna go back. And we're gonna reopen, yeah.
Yeah.
And I will say that, and so I'll make that part of the motion.
Okay.
And then we will reopen the meeting as part of the motion, okay? Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the board is now open to comments or questions from the public. Questions.
Putting a lot of hours in.
Yes, that's right. Now would be the appropriate time. We're forever hold your peace. Carol, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, because he can't, we can't see you or hear you if you don't, right? Okay. Okay. All right.
My question is, is there going to be a formal thank you to Commissioner Harbison?
Ah, yes, we are. This is the next thing we're gonna be doing.
And that's gonna be tonight?
It's gonna be about, but we're gonna do a resolution next month?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
At the reorganization.
Okay, yeah.
Now, it'll be at the regular business meeting, won't it?
Correct.
Which is, so that's not the right, that's the regular Wednesday, second Wednesday in the month. Whatever that is, the twelfth.
The second thing is, I want to thank you for putting all the information you do in those packets for the meetings, for the workshop meetings. I have printed them out. I have looked through them. I know what's coming, and I really appreciate the detail that has been included in them, because they really give a lot of information. So thank you. I appreciate it.
And you're required to keep these for twenty years, yeah. Okay, so now it's time.
Okay, to say goodbye.
Take all our company.
Take the. I'm not gonna sing the Mickey Mouse club, although I think it might be very appropriate. Although, because I have a drink in my hand, I'm gonna take my mask off for this. Got my loophole in case my wife calls me out. So I have a statement I want to read that would not be appropriate at the next meeting. This is my thank you to everybody. My last dig at everybody. Tonight marks my last meeting after serving Springfield for sixteen years on the Board of Commissioners, eight as president. I've tried to be fully informed, thoughtful, and representative of all of Springfield, not just a select group. I hope I lead the township stronger than when I was first elected. While the meetings have often been long and occasionally acrimonious, the Commissioners have, without exception, been committed to the best interests of the township and a belief that things can always be better. We've done a lot, but a few things I am most proud of include the construction and financing of our new municipal campus, the replacement of all streetlights with energy-efficient L E D. streetlights, the redirection of our pension funds from active management to indexed funds. This move has yielded an eight point eight percent return since two thousand fourteen, when we made the move, and eleven point two percent over the past five years. Our pensions are now among the best managed in the state. And I am most proud of our passing of one of the state's first nondiscrimination ordinances, signaling to the world that intolerance is not acceptable, and that all are welcome in our community. Springfield is full of intelligent, passionate voices. Collectively, those voices have led us to maintain and improve a great municipality. We hear these voices regularly through many different channels and appreciate the feedback and guidance. But I caution the Commissioners not to buckle to the loudest voices in the room. Too often, the loud voices contempt us to forget other constituencies, particularly the older, the infirm, and those on fixed incomes. Some examples, resisting development due to pressure of NIMBY neighbors. And I don't mean to be aiming this at just what's going on. This is a much broader thing here. It sounds like I'm doing that, but. Some of our tracks are subject to more intense development consistent with zoning. To block this by purchasing land or other tactics puts a significant burden on our budget and our tax base. While many people can absorb higher taxes, those on fixed incomes are more likely to be forced out of the township, lessening our cherished diversity. My views on the inadvisability of speed bumps seems to have moved into the minority. Again, the louder voices will always want speed bumps on their blocks and will let us know, including the predicting that death will ensue and it will be it will be our fault. I encourage you to go beyond the loudest voices and listen to our first responders. The bumps will delay responses to fires and medical emergencies, which can endanger our citizens. The people most endangered by speed bumps are the elderly and the infirm, and they will not be at our meetings expressing their views. Have the courage to protect them. I have faith in the talent, judgment, and good intentions of the seven Commissioners, and believe they will identify and do what is best for the long-term strength of the township. I want to give a shout out to our township employees. The professionalism and commitment to the township shines through from the top managers to the rank-and-file employees. We don't say it enough, but we thank you for making us look good, and thank you for your exemplary service. I want to recognize those who've been with me for the entire stretch. Mike Taylor and Baird have been here longer than I have and have been great colleagues and friends. I outlasted Don Berger and Glenn Schum, but wanted to thank them for their commitment and guidance through about fourteen of these years. And of course, my family, Val Arkush, and our three kids, Ian, Trevor, and Olivia. Ian is is twenty, is now twenty-one, but as a lad, he would see my suit and rue that I had on my meat and clothes and would not be able to read him to sleep. The four of them have all made a commitment to this position, and I thank them. Finally, I want to thank all of you for making this a great experience. Your feedback and support have built my knowledge, wisdom, and facilitated personal growth. I'm a far better person for having been your Commissioner. I'm grateful for all the people I've gotten to know, and I look forward to remaining relevant. I do intend to keep my well-known email list going, and will continue to do my best to make it useful. It's been a pleasure. We all share a commitment to the greatness of Springfield Township. Godspeed, Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
No, thank you.
It'll be helpful for the minutes.
I have one for the media, but they left.
Okay, thanks. Jeff tried to saw me his email list for a hundred bucks, but I wouldn't.
It's a lot of work. There's a lot of lost pets.
Okay. Well, now I guess I will entertain a motion to close out. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we should all probably say something individually to Jeff, but.
Oh, okay.
Before we go. Um, I I don't know how to express the meaning of thanking you for the guidance in twenty fifteen, the mentorship coming into this position, going over the agenda book, which is, you know, quite intimidating the first time you see it, being available for phone calls and the text messages and explaining things that I didn't understand and you know, the notes. It's meant a lot to me. I thank you for it. You were a great help getting me to where I am currently. Although I don't think I'll miss when you and Baird sat next to each other and the side conversations kept the meetings going a little longer, but they were fun to listen to. I know you'll be around. Hopefully, you'll answer my texts when I send them to you with questions. And you know, always be hoping you come November, December.
In New Year's.
For college football, yeah.
In New Year's Eve.
So good luck to you, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mike.
And I'll piggyback just on the the mentor piece that I'm very grateful for, and how you did lead by example of always putting the best interests of Springfield first, above party, above friendships, affiliations, whatever it might be. It was always about Springfield. And you were an exemplary and are an exemplary leader. And your accessibility in being there to help walk through complex issues very, very grateful for. And while I do expect and hope to see you around, I also equally hope that maybe you might spend more time out of Springfield as well in the future. I'll be rooting for that. But I'm very, very, very grateful for the time I got to spend as your colleague and getting to know you as a friend. Thank you.
Let me also say that I, so I've probably been, probably known Jeff longer than anybody else on the board, and he's been just a great friend of mine, and you know, we've worked through a lot of stuff together and continue to, you know, I look forward to staying close to him. I don't know if everybody knows this, but besides this, this venture, Jeff and I are also members of a of a small choral group. We sing together, and so we will probably continue to do that, you know, as second tenors. And maybe, you know, at our Christmas thing, we'll even sing a song for y'all.
Wow.
We hear a little.
What do you think of that?
Yeah, I know. You know.
That'd be good.
Anyway.
Want to go, or you want me to go?
Good, you go.
Yeah, Jeff, I just want to say thank you for all the leadership that you've had over the years. While I was employed here, when you got here, you clearly took the ball and ran with it and and led by example. And we certainly benefited from your financial acumen and leadership, and the public benefited from your your common sense explanation of what we were doing up here. It was all very scripted and and hashed out at the workshop meeting, but if you were new to the the meeting on on Wednesday, Jeff had a really good way of putting it all into context and explaining it to everybody, and I think that was helpful and and something that I hope we can pick up on in the in the future. It occurs to me that, you know, from sitting on that side down there before I was able to to be in this position, I can't recall a time where where Jeff and Glenn Schum, former Commissioner, didn't vote the same way. And it was just a reality of they they vote what they felt was right for the community. Didn't matter where any of their peers may have been from whatever party. They they just felt very strongly on certain issues that were right for the community, and they did so. So it was something that we really appreciated at a staff level and something that I I wrote, you know, a pretty lengthy thing in the manager's report. We'll miss him.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Jeff, sixteen years is a long time, especially eight as president. I know you've been on the hot seat a number of times. You've handled it with grace and dignity. We will miss your, we will miss your experience. We will miss your 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 background and within the township, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, I wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Eddie.
I was gonna say the same thing Peter said. Sixteen years is impressive, and and half of it is as president. When I was first started coming to these meetings, you were the one, you know, running the ship, and it was really eye-opening to see, you know, what you, what the board all did. So that's a tremendous commitment. Thank you. And we're definitely gonna miss the the knowledge, the experience, the institutional knowledge. We're lucky to have Mike. There's a lot of that, but we're really gonna miss, you know, that that aspect without you, so thank you very much.
And then one, just to put a little bit of a spin on all this, because I, hopefully, we're done with this stuff. Does anybody remember what the first contentious vote was? Fifteen and three-quarter years ago, we had T C and Boris Scott put through by the lame duck group, so that was done.
Yeah.
But we had one big issue that led to his huge nightmare. And it had to do with Brian Halligan. It was over who, to whom to award the Flower Town Country Club lease.
Right.
And I was the one, well, Baird did it too, but I think I was the one who got the responsibility, who voted with other party to.
How many contestants?
Brian. And I became persona non grata over that, but I do think.
I was living in Colorado at the time.
That's right. He was right. He was right, right where we are.
Edwards, Colorado. And I will also tell you, one Christmas, one Christmas party, while this was all going on, we all were hanging around the bar, and then Mike and I, and I forget somebody else that came up, we decided, heck with it, we're going down to Halligan's, and we played Quizzle, and we won. And I took home this football.
Football.
Yeah, we won a football.
And the reason I voted, I think that.
And the reason I voted, I think that was a very good decision cuz I think the other group was really shaky, but was Joe Halligan, um, Brian's, his dad or his uncle, dad. His dad, who was the one pushing for it, he and I went out, as I didn't know him. And it wasn't, it's brand new to office and we walked, just walked the course. We didn't play golf cuz it was the middle of the winter and we just walked it. And he talked about his vision and what he wanted to do and how we could make it more inclusive. You know, how do you make this without dumping all the cost on people? How do you make it so Springfield residents feel it's their own and he really won me over and I think they have been very good stewards of that that club. So I don't know when you get it, but it just hit me that, wow, isn't it kind of funny? We started with Brian Halligan and ending it. I don't have to deal with this. So, okay, thank you, everybody. Why don't you take a entertain a motion to adjourn?
All right.
Or I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, any comments? You know, I'd just say, you know, forty-one years ago, uh, John Lennon died of a heinous violent act and, you know, I've been reading about it all day and watching the the Beatles thing on TV, so you know. Here's to John, anyway. All right, so we're closing out the meeting. Uh, all in favor, please, do you get a second on that?
Yes, we did.
Okay, all, and no comments, question, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, all opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote. So long, twenty twenty-one.
Use your gavel.
Twenty twenty-two, here we go.
All right.